It is six o'clock, so I want to keep things moving here, so I'm going to call the order of the meeting, the regular meeting of the Brandon City Council at six o'clock on December 21st, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark, David, Fish, Droggensen, Cole, Parliament, Mayor Lumber.
Here. Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. Christina, call the roll.
Clark, David, Fish, Droggensen, Cole, Parliament.
Motion carries. Thank you. I have three sets of minutes from December 3rd, December 7th, and December 10th. Entertained a motion to approve as presented. Motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions or comments? Christina.
Clark, David, Fish, Droggensen, Cole, Parliament.
Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the bills and claims submitted with the agenda in the amount of $1,258,481.69. Can I have a motion? Motion is second to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. Any questions, comments? Christina.
Clark, David, Fish, Droggensen, Cole, Parliament.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. We are now at the public input portion of our agenda. Anybody that wishes to address the council may do so at this time. I ask that you just state your name and where you live.
Justin Selkner of 1408 East Liberty in Brandon. Oh, I got something. I guess I'm here because I want to put a swimming pool up. The first thing, I'm a terrible public speaker. The first thing I gave you is a printout from international standards codebooks. On the top of it, it does say it's from a different city. I didn't want to spend the $80 to buy a codebook to print this out. Everything you found pretty much is the same thing. Section 3109-4 tells you you have to have a barrier 48 inches tall, which I fully agree with. You go down to the next section, 3109.4.1, tells you the barrier has to be there. And there it even says where the top of the pool structure is above ground, the barrier is authorized to be at ground level or mounted on top of the pool structure. So even if your pool is only 30 inches, it says you can put a fence on top of the pool to make it 48. The next page on that first handout says, let's see here, 31.3109.4.1.9, it even says that the pool structure can be used counted as a barrier. And then the next handout is from the Safety Commission from the U.S. Government. If you go to page eight in that handout, it shows you that the wall of the pool counts, you can have a deck, you can have a ladder, as long as the ladder is removable, lockable, so it does not have access to it. The next thing is actually off of the City of Brandon's website, which is currently still on there. It pretty much mimics both those standards, word for word. And my understanding is, for some odd reason, they want to change it so the wall of the pool don't count as a barrier, but I think the wording in it says that if it's a temporary pool, you don't have to have a fence. So the next handout is a picture of one of those inflatable swimming pools you can buy from Walmart for $1,000 that you take down in summertime or wintertime. The way I understand it, you don't have to have a fence around that because you take it down. The next thing is a picture of what I want to do. It might not be to scale. It might not be exact. It's a picture I pulled off the Internet. I want to put an above-ground pool with a deck on it, with a self-closing, spring-loaded, self-latch gate. The only thing in this picture I would do different is I would put the gate at the bottom, so it hits the deck. So if a kid pushes against it, you're pushing against the deck instead of just the latch. And I guess I'd like to know why did something happen that they decided to change this? How does this rule apply to hot tubs? Does the wall of a hot tub count as a barrier, or does all the hot tubs have to have a fence around that? With the style pool I want to put in, you only drain it about a third of the way, so by spending the money on the better pool, which I would like to do, you'll save about 5,000 to 7,000 gallons of water a year because you reuse the water. You shock it in the fall, you drain it below the skimmer. In the spring, it melts, you put some chemical in it, you don't have to change the water. My insurance company, I talked to the broker, he deals with two different insurance companies, both of those insurance companies, I don't remember the names, stated that they don't care if you have a fence around it as long as you follow the manufacturers of the pool's instructions as far as warning signage, stickers, and placements of that. I did call City of Sioux Falls, Code Enforcement. They said as long as the pool of the wall is at least 48 inches high, and with a removable ladder, you do not need a fence around it. They did recommend that you do not use a removable ladder, that you put a locking ladder, a locking gate of some kind, because you're never going to remove it. And I guess if we have to start putting fences around pools like this, are you still going to be allowed to, as a business owner, like First National Bank, they put the pond and fountain in for, to me, that's something like that's just as easy for a kid to fall in and drown. I guess I think that's about all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you. Others that wish to address the council?
Turn on the mic. There. Marcel Toma, I live in the Split Rock Apartments here in Brandon. I was here two weeks ago about the masks. Still oppose the mandates. As the COVID crisis continues, more is being learned about the effect of mask mandates between states and countries. As data is processed, it appears as though the masks may in fact be contributing to the spread of COVID. How can that be? Well, I'll leave that to the experts to figure that one out, but we'll start with Dr. Fauci. He made a statement on March 8th, 2020, and I quote, "There is no reason to be walking around with a mask when you're in the middle of an outbreak. Wearing a mask might make people feel a little bit better, and it might block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think it is. And often, there are unintended consequences. People keep fiddling with the mask, and they keep touching their face," unquote. Now, Dr. Fauci has been seen wearing masks and asked about that. He said it shows that he cares. Not that it is effective, it shows that he cares. A third point, 3M Company has a plant in Aberdeen where they manufacture what I assume is the gold standard in face masks, the N95. OSHA certifies this mask as a filter for particles as small as 300 nanometers, very small. The COVID virus is about 20 nanometers. COVID can pass through a mask like a mosquito going through a chain-link fence. So I'd just like to conclude with a quote from Franklin Delano Roosevelt. He said, quote, "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself." Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Chuck Parsons, 600 North Yellowstone. Do you hear me okay? Couple of things. I would ask that the council support under Old Business A, B, and C. Your Planning and Zoning Commission takes these items seriously. We talk about these items. We make hard decisions that sometimes elected officials don't like to make, so I would hope that you'd be supportive of those decisions that we've dealt with throughout the years. Second item regarding the golf course, that building's 20 years old, I believe. I think that as a city, we've been negligent in not doing proper capital improvements that we're supposed to do. I would hope that you take that item seriously, whether you deal with landscape or we leave it in the hands of Kelly and Andrew. I think Andrew's demonstrated this year, especially when the pandemic started, how he was able to handle, you know, different procedures that we needed to do. He was very proactive on the pro formas that he put together on those golf carts. There's been a drastic change in attitude out there that I've witnessed as a customer. I would like to see the Council of Landscape is agreeable to doing it, is maybe dipping your toe in the water, so to speak, and see if they let you use them for their marketing services. I think that could be a real benefit. I've stated that to you all in an email that I sent out a couple of weeks ago, and I firmly believe in that, that that could be some benefit. I think you should consider giving Andrew some time, and I think that time is four to five-year period, to see what he can do on average because we know we're going to have more floods, we know we're going to have rains, but I think we should give him that opportunity to see what he can do out there as far as management goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Chabot, 704 South Fifth Avenue here in Brandon. Just want to make a few comments here, prepared a few notes here regarding the discussion of the golf course and certainly reviewing the proposal, at least in a limited extent of what I had access to. But it is kind of interesting that we're here tonight, kind of going through the golf course scenario and different options and different proposals. Specifically, I'd like to address a couple of things, and I think history is a great teacher as well. The first thing is, remember several years ago that we were approached by Tom Walsh and Great Life, and the community had quite a bit of an outcry at that time. After careful review, the community really came together, and I think you, the folks that were representing us at the time, felt that it was certainly something to be tabled, as it was not in the best interest of Brandon and the community. So after reviewing the proposal today, I think it's really important for us to review it as a whole, but then in some context as well. And I appreciate looking at it. There's actually a lot of good things. Here, I'm not just going to be a negative Nancy here this evening, but what I'll tell you is that I think we need to really take a perspective on this and understanding that, you know, the local community members, in addition to businesses, have already forgone about $80,000 of their funds to help with course improvements. Okay, so that speaks volumes of the support that we have from the community. And under current leadership and management, new carts have been purchased, and a strategic plan has been carefully developed with an emphasis on maintaining and improving the facilities and grounds. This is despite Mother Nature throwing us a really nasty Hail Mary over the first few years, which has obviously had a direct impact on the financials of the course. But I can tell you right now that despite those, the staff that we have here has been steadfast and resolute in maintaining that course and doing what they can in an expeditious manner as well. So today, we kind of had the proposal from Landscape, and I admit that I'm really unclear on if this was unsolicited or if somebody solicited this, and if so, how and why. But nevertheless, in evaluating the proposal, I just want to take a little bit of time to talk about numbers real quick. And it looks to me, in my review, is that they're asking for about $84,000 a year for five years, and that's $420,000 for the management and oversight. And of course, that doesn't necessarily include the usual and customary costs of operations or necessary capital improvements, such as the wall and the retaining wall and the parking lot. In addition to that $420,000, we have 10% charge of increased net operating income will be incurred. Now, in my opinion, it's somewhat vague and ambiguous on how that's going to be calculated, but let's also keep in mind that I think we played the final note in 2021 on that, and that's obviously an expense that we need to consider, though it won't be there. So we just want to make sure that the landscapes, either unintentionally or unintentionally, isn't trying to capitalize on our commitment to our prior financial obligations. So then we move on, and then in addition to that $420,000 over five years, the proposal contains what Landscapes refers to as capital planning, and that's for the clubhouse renovation, the range improvements, and an indoor golf simulator. To me, I would define these as more ancillary, because yes, we do need some improvements on the facility, but do we need to do all these now, or do we need to worry about true core capital expenditures? This portion of the proposal seeks to financially commit the City of Brandon to an additional cost outlay of about $110,000 a year or $550,000 over five years. So for the next five years, combining these two parts of the proposal, the City of Brandon would be committed to roughly $200,000 annually, or $1 million over five years, on top of what our operational budget already is. That's about 1.3 to 1.5 million over a 20-year commitment when you actually break down the numbers. And my question to you is, is that really something that we want to do as a community, and is that financially smart in the current financial landscapes? So the proposal on face value may be attractive with its generous ROI estimations and projections. However, these are estimations, and I appreciate that they use some sort of statistical model, but again, they are estimations, and we are Brandon, and we are kind of a unique community as well. So I personally, again, I can only speak for myself, kind of doubt some of those ROI numbers. And not to mention, there's really no consideration of attrition to golfers due to change, and we're going to have some of that with any type of change. Rather, somehow, they've stated there's a 50 golfer increase yearly projected, and there's really no mention in the proposal of a fee structure. Are we going to increase these rates? How are we going to get this ROI? And I've looked at things, and I'm a businessman myself with a business background, and I question some of these findings that are put in there. There's another critical consideration with this proposal, in addition to the $200,000 or the 1.5 million over 20 years. And again, that does not include the present necessary capital expenditures that I mentioned before. And it doesn't include daily operating costs, so make sure that when we're taking a critical look at this, that we're understanding that this is in addition to what our operating costs are going to be. So I'll leave it at that for this evening, but I pose a couple of questions. Number one is, is it financially responsible to commit the City of Brandon to an additional $550,000 over the next five years? Is it financially responsible to commit the City of Brandon for an additional 1.5 million over 20 years? And considering the level of spending and diverting from our self-control and self-management, I would think it prudent to carefully evaluate and reflect on this proposal over other options that are yet to be presented. To my understanding, this is the only presentation, the only thing being considered on the table at this point. One option to consider is to investigate obtaining an equity loan at current historic low interest rates for necessary capital improvements, and engage your community members and golf course leaders in review, assessment, and revision of a strategic plan to ensure that the decision and commitments that we make here reflect the best interests of the citizens of Brandon. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Sittig, 1212 Fleetwood Circle, Brandon. I'm here to talk about this landscape taking over the Brandon Golf Course, especially with the taking over of all of the records and the money and the management of the golfers that want to buy management out here at this golf course. Personally, I golf at a different course, and I have golfed at this course for many years. The part that bothers me is that if you turn over everything to landscape management, the memberships, the money, and especially the memberships, and this thing turns sour, Landscapes walks off with a membership list and presents it to their courses in Sioux Falls and says, "Look here. We've got a whole list of people that want to buy memberships, and we'll sell it to them in Sioux Falls at the three courses they presently own." The thing of that is, they can simply say, "You had to pay this in Brandon. We're going to sell it to you this in Sioux Falls." Then they walk away with everything. You're left with nothing but a skeleton. The meat has been picked from the bones, and you're going to have to try, if you're going to keep that course out there, you're going to have to restart with nothing. I'm totally against Landscape having this golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Thanks, thanks. All right. My name's Shannon Emery. I live at 605 South Nicholas Circle in Brandon. And I'm talking about the mask mandate, obviously, the mask resolution. I've lived in Brandon for 13 years, and I have three kids in Brandon's school system. I'm a pediatrician and a veteran of the United States Air Force. I don't normally give all these credentials, but I think it's important for you to know in this context. I attended the Military Medical School in Bethesda, Maryland, where we had extra training in public health and preventive medicine. This was really important because you have to keep military troops healthy so they can fight effectively. As a pediatrician, my life's work is to prevent illness, prevent injury, prevent death. So public health matters are really important to me. I've also been a bit obsessed, like many physicians, with learning about COVID since the pandemic started, because we are so passionate about preventing illness and death. I got a crash course in COVID in April when I went to New York City to work in a field hospital for COVID patients to help reduce the burden on hospitals there. I wouldn't wish COVID on anyone. Some people get through fairly unscathed, but many people spend weeks in the hospital and suffer for months afterwards. Many will have their lives cut short because of the long-term complications of COVID, and let's not ignore the deaths. Three different days last week saw a nationwide death toll over 3,000 people. That's more than died on 9/11, and you remember how devastating that was. My whole incentive for coming tonight is to help prevent illness and save lives in the Brandon community. I don't envy your position. I'm sure you're getting a ton of emails and phone calls. There are a million different arguments around this mask debate. I'm sure it's a lot of noise to sort through. As you all consider all the points we are making and getting all this input, please think about how you are categorizing this in your mind. What arguments are you centering and putting priority on? I would argue that the priority should be saving lives, should be the health of the community. Is this how you are centering your decision-making? Are you thinking about it from a public health perspective, or are you prioritizing the business owner's perspective, or the perspective of the individual who's arguing for personal freedom? Did you consult with a medical advisor? What external influences are impacting your decision, and how much weight are you giving each one? Are you giving public health considerations the weight they deserve? I want you to please also consider how we are approaching this mask resolution compared with other fairly complicated issues that come before the council. If I were on the council, there are many, many topics I would have no background knowledge on, and I would seek input from other folks. I have not a clue about water issues, except I don't like how mine tastes, so I would absolutely need to hear from people who could explain that all to me before I would want to vote on something as important as people's water, and I hope I would consider safety of the water over my preference for how it tastes. When you have a legal issue, I'm sure you consult with your city attorney. When you have a law enforcement issue, I'm sure you look to Chief Weir for input and advice. Please consider using the same approach for this pandemic. It is very complicated. It is very new. We are still learning as we go. Dr. Fauci has definitely changed his mind on masks, and I don't expect you all to know the details, but I do expect you to seek advice, to get input from experts in the field. Please consider how this is similar to drunk driving laws, which were also unpopular at first. Laws against drunk driving help save lives, just like a mask statement would. Laws against drunk driving interfere with people's personal choices, but it's worth it because it saves lives. We try not to let people get drunk and then say that they will drive, and they'll just use common sense and personal responsibility. We don't let them do that because other people can get hurt and die. It's the same thing as not wearing a mask. You cannot say that you are using your own common sense and personal responsibility when that choice you made can literally kill someone else. Laws against drunk driving don't prevent all car accidents. People still die in car accidents from other reasons. We are not saying that wearing a mask will prevent all deaths from coronavirus. There are many ways we try to prevent car accidents, speed limits, we use headlights at night, we use stoplights. In the same way, we have many strategies to help us prevent COVID infections and deaths. Just because speed limits, for example, don't prevent all car accidents, doesn't mean we take the speed limits away. And laws against drunk driving help shape people's behavior. It doesn't stop everyone from doing it, but most people will think twice before they try it. We want to shape people's behavior. It will save lives. The longer we waited to implement drunk driving laws, the more people died in car accidents. In the same way, the longer we wait to implement a mask policy, the more people will die from COVID. Our grandchildren will look back at this moment in time and ask us what we were thinking. Why did we have so much trouble with something so simple? Again, please consider what priorities you are centering, and I really hope that you will center your community's health as the top priority. Thank you.
Jeff Thue, 1005 North Sub Boulevard. I just, I respect your opinion and what you're doing, and thank you for doing what you do and your service. I just happen to disagree on the fact that I think it still is a personal choice thing, and there's an awful lot of data, as you can see here, that states without mask mandates are doing as good or better than states with mask mandates. And a lot of these states have went way beyond just mask mandates. And I could print this stuff all day long, and it takes too much time, but it's a virus, and we're not going to, you can't stop it. We've tried to slow it down, and if you really want to get nitty-gritty, when this first thing, when this virus first came out, they said it was the first big wave the whole country had. It lasted 45 to 60 days. If you look at the graphs in all of these states, the waves lasted 45 to 60 days. South Dakota, if you look at that one, and North Dakota, were coming up on 60 days, and it's fallen off the cliff. I just think it should be a personal choice. You should have respect for people that, if they ask you to put one on, if they're, you know, elderly or whatever, or whatever the case, you know, have your respect for them, but I don't think a mask mandate is the way to go, especially in South Dakota, and we're not as densely populated as New York and all these other places. I mean, I go into, you go into Walmart, and you're never within six feet of anybody for more than a minute. Same thing with any of the major places people go around here, so. And plus, since we're already on the downswing, I mean, if this was going to happen, I think we're late anyway. So anyways, just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tom Everett, President of Landscapes Golf Management, 1201 Aries Drive Lincoln. Just wanted to take the opportunity to respond to, briefly respond to a few public comments here. Change is hard. It's scary. It's a big conglomerate coming in to take over your golf course, and that simply couldn't be further from the truth. We are a family-owned business. We have a team of passionate people that want to get out of bed every day and come and help you achieve your objectives for the property. Marketing support was mentioned in our LU Select Service Delivery. I'd just say that that product was really designed for properties that are stable, that really just need help in one area. I think you need help in multiple areas, and I would hesitate to make that available to you because I'm not sure it would work in this particular case. I'd just like to speak to your golf manager, Andrew. Our regional manager, Chris Jacobson, speaks very highly of Andrew. He appears to be well-equipped to lead the operation going forward. I fear that Andrew's experience is limited to the Brandon Golf Course, and... I fear that Andrew's experience is limited to the Brandon Golf Course, and we want to be able to share our expertise from 50 properties across the country in 20 states with him to help him and Kelly be the best that they could absolutely be. Gentleman mentioned the cost, $420,000 over five years. I don't think you can afford not to make that investment, honestly. I think when you look at, if we don't grow one more round to the City of Brandon Golf Course, you're gonna achieve, you're going to achieve that, the cost of our services simply through your purchasing and your efficiency as of operation. I can, that's just experience that we have. Gentleman mentioned the capital expenditures, we were simply responding to a request within the request for proposal. Those are ideas that we can implement as the golf course is stabilized going forward to produce additional revenue opportunities. And we have no ulterior motives here to, to, to capture your membership lists. We, we just simply, our integrity is much more valuable to us than that. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Very good. We'll move on with our agenda. Number eight is old business, and the second reading of a number of ordinances here. We'll take them one at a time. Second reading of ordinance 617, admitting to the Brandon zoning ordinance, non-conforming uses of non-standard lots and merger of the simultaneously approved lots. I can have a motion to approve second reading of 617. Motion is second to approve second reading of ordinance number 617. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item 8B is the second reading of ordinance 618 relating to the additional use regulations, accessory buildings, structures, and land uses. I entertain a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 618. Motion is second to approve the second reading of ordinance 618 as presented, and questions, comments from the council? Hearing none.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Hi.
Item 8C is the second reading of ordinance 619 regarding additional use regulations in swimming pools. I entertain a motion to approve second reading of ordinance 619 as presented. Motion is second to approve the ordinance, uh, second reading of ordinance 619 as presented. Questions, comments? Dave?
I've never seen quite the disarray that people have with these microphones. I don't know, we gotta get, uh, microphones just automatically go on when we walk up to them or something.
I, I should have pushed it on the side first.
Very good, go ahead, Dave.
Okay, on, on this particular thing, I, I thought Paul Clark was possibly gonna be here, but one of my questions is, with the requirement of a fence and, and the code that was cited earlier, I didn't notice that it, it had changed here recently and, and that, that section was quite shortened. But the fence, how far away from the pool structure does this fence need to be in order to satisfy the barrier? Is it surrounding the entire yard, is it just surrounding the pool structure?
It could be either. And every yard is different, so if they have a fence, like privacy fence around their backyard, then that works as the barrier.
Okay, so without a, if you have a yard that does not have a fence around it, and you have a pool located somewhere in that yard, and as, as I understand, the barrier, the barrier has to be, it doesn't specify around the yard, specifies around the pool.
Correct.
How far away, I mean, is there anything that says, "Has to be this far"?
No.
So, if a fence was, and this is where it kind of gets into the weeds a little bit, if a fence was three inches away from the pool, would that satisfy this? And then it kind of brings up the logic of...
Let the record show that the city attorney was acknowledging yes.
I, I did, I did notice that. If it was one inch away, would that satisfy the barrier, as this is written? So, if, I, I mean, I'm looking at the drawing here with the gate on the thing, the fence around the top, side walls are, are 52 inches. And most of what I understand is this is supposed to hopefully prevent a toddler, because toddlers are the ones that I think aren't able to scale that. It, it seems to me that the toddler would at that point be protected by the side walls. And I just, I, I struggle with this. And if you could answer that, is that fence supposed to be around the entire yard, is it just supposed to be around the fence? What was the intention?
We didn't discuss that. Dave, the fence could be mounted on top of the pool. The point is that even if the pool is two feet deep and they have a three-foot fence, they still have to have a fence on top of that to protect it.
Yeah, and anything over, what, 18 inches deep?
24 inches. 24 inches deep.
24 inches deep, okay.
So, there was a question about hot tubs, how is that applicable in this?
So, a hot tub would be a temporary structure. One thing?
No.
No?
This was just designed for pools, that this is, whether a barrier had to be around a pool, not a hot tub. So, the ordinance revision doesn't apply to hot tubs. If you want Paul Clark or I to take a look at hot tubs, we certainly can, but what went before your planning and zoning commission was the idea of pools. And really, the ambiguity between a barrier surrounding and a barrier. And Mr. Clark in Planning and Zoning supported that the walls of the pool could not be a barrier, because the barrier has to surround. So, you certainly could attach a fencing structure, a barrier, when we consider fences, we really think of fence more around the yard, and a barrier in this above-ground pool setting, you certainly could attach a barrier, or Councilman Cole, if you want to think of that as a fence, you could attach a structure, a fence, all the way around the pool, it just can't be the pool walls. So, you could attach something such as that fencing all the way around, but it has to start at the bottom of the ground and go up. That was a design that Mr. Clark supported, not just having the pool wall being the barrier.
Okay, and I, and I don't see what that necessarily accomplishes in, in regard to, if you have a 52, two-inch wall and you put a 48-inch barrier smack dab up against it, I guess I don't see what, what, what is accomplished.
He was really trying to get to the issue of a barrier, the international codes, as I best recall, saying it has, the barrier has to surround the pool, can't be part of, it says surround the pool, and to not have a detachable ladder that somebody could leave there. I don't think Paul, and he's not here to speak to this, was thinking about something that looks like the picture that you guys presented tonight, where the detachable ladder isn't there. He was really trying to get to the ambiguity between the different codes and how he thought it best to create the safest environment that he thought should be at minimum there for toddlers coming into an area. If there's not a fence otherwise around the entire backyard.
Okay, how does this apply for the temporary pools that are, you can buy at Walmart or whatever, that's over 24 inches deep, that can be put up, taken down?
You still have to, as I recall, even if it's an inflatable pool, if it's above the 18 inches, you have to have a barrier around it, you have to have a fence around it. You can't just put an inflatable one there that's gonna be up for summer.
Other questions from council members? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Cole?
No.
Parliament?
No.
Motion passes 4-2. Thank you. Item 8D is the second reading of ordinance number 620, providing a supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year 2020 budget. I have a motion to approve. Motion is second to approve the second reading of ordinance 620. Any questions, comments? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Cole?
No.
Parliament?
No.
Motion fails 4-2. Okay, thank you. Item 2 under the...
Can you make a comment?
Sure.
I was really torn on, on the golf course thing, and I guess I just wanted to make my comments here and give Andrew a vote of confidence. I think Landscape's presented some very, very well-thought-out and plans for the future for the course, but I think we do need to give Andrew the, and Kelly, you know, at least another year. They, they've done well this, this past year, weather and everything else. I think we have an opportunity to, to keep improving with the clubhouse being paid off. I'll be interested to see what we can do with the influx of money into the course. So, that's, that's the way I went with my vote, and we'll stick with it for now and see if we can improve it some more.
Very good. Item A2 is the bank stabilization project bids. We had a number of bids come in, the low bid was from 605 companies in the amount of I entertain a motion to approve that low bid. Motion is second to approve the low bid from 605 companies at $214,877.60. Questions, comments? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Cole?
No.
Parliament?
No.
Motion carries. In relation to that project, we have a proposal from Clark Engineering for construction and administration of that, of that proposal in the amount of $37,542. I have a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve Clark Engineering to perform the contract administration on the bank stabilization project. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Cole?
No.
Parliament?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Under Parks and Recs, we have a proposal to purchase a 2021 Kubota UTV from Pfeiffer Inflement in the amount of $28,593.76. I entertain a motion to approve that.
I would make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Motion is second. is about. But I think it's certainly worth a try.
The positive comments that I've heard about the taking care of the course since we brought in Kelly and the management of the course with Andrew, we had a great year. And of course, you know, part of that great year was due to the weather. We weren't facing any floods this year, so playership went up. I think maybe COVID drove some of the playership up also, and we had a positive. You know, one year isn't a good enough indication of what the future years are going to be, but I guess I would like to see where we are in the following years, the next two to three years, and see if that continues. And I guess I would have a vote of confidence for what we're doing now and how they've been addressing those challenges. I've been very, very impressed with Andrew and the presentations that he's made and the advancements he's made. I've heard the positive comments about the people feeling good about the course, and so I guess that's where I'm at. I'm not necessarily looking at changing the management at this time.
Any other comments? Christina, call the roll.
Clark? Aye. David?
Aye.
Fish?
No.
Ferguson?
Nay.
Cole?
No.
Parliament?
No.
Motion fails four to two. Okay, thank you. Item two under the...
Can you make a comment?
Sure.
I was really torn on the golf course thing. And I guess I just wanted to make my comments here and give Andrew a vote of confidence. I think Landscapes presented some very, very well thought out and plans for the future for the course. But I think we do need to give Andrew the, and Kelly, you know, at least another year. They've done well this past year, weather and everything else. I think we have an opportunity to keep improving with the clubhouse being paid off. I'll be interested to see what we can do with the influx of money into the course. So that's the way I went with my vote. We'll stick with it for now and see if we can improve it some more.
Very good. Item A two is the bank stabilization project bids. We had a number of bids come in. The low bid was from six oh five companies in the amount of $214,877.60. I'd entertain a motion to approve that low bid.
No. I'll second that.
Motion is second to approve the low bid from six oh five companies at $214,877.60. Questions, comments? Christina.
Clark? Aye. David?
Aye.
Aye.
Ferguson? Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. In relation to that project, we have a proposal from Clark Engineering for construction administration of that proposal in the amount of $37,542. I have a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve Clark Engineering to perform the contract administration on the bank stabilization project. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Christina.
Clark? Aye. David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Under Parks and Recs, we have a proposal to purchase a 2021 Kubota UTV from Pfeiffer Implement in the amount of $28,593.76. I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
I would make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
Motion is second to approve the purchase of a 2021 Kubota from Pfeiffer Implement in the amount of $28,593.76. Any questions from the council? Christina.
Clark? Aye. David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye. Ferguson?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a wage adjustment for Seth Olson, adjusting his salary to $19.62 an hour. Call for motion.
Move to approve.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment for Seth Olson to $19.62 an hour. Any questions? Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carried. Item number four, under Parks and Recs, we have a RFP proposal for a bike and pedestrian path. Total estimated cost of this proposal would be $100,000, of which 80% of it would be covered by the MPO. And the city of Brandon will be responsible for 20% of that, approximately $20,000. I entertain a motion to approve.
I would move that, Mayor. Second?
Motion is second to approve the bike and pedestrian plan RFP as presented. Questions? Hearing none. Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Public Safety, we have a, first item on the agenda is to approve the 2021 Animal Control Contract with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Contract identical to the current year of 2020, rates stay the same. I entertain a motion.
Second?
Motion is second to approve the 2021 Animal Control Contract with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Any questions from the council? Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Wage adjustment for Alex Palmer to $30.53 an hour. I entertain a motion. Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment for Alex Palmer to $30.53 an hour. All in faith, or Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Very good. Next item on the agenda, under administration, is the item listed on the agenda is Resolution 37-20, encouraging the wearing of face masks. I would start this off by saying that the city attorney issued a memo to all council today and thought that the changes were not significant enough in this new resolution, that we should, the proper way to handle this would be to reconsider the prior resolution. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to reconsider the prior resolution that was not passed at the last board meeting.
I will make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Just so everybody knows that the motion was made by one of the no voters from last time, so that makes it appropriate with all the parliamentary procedures and whatnot. Any questions, comments from the council? Hearing none. Christina?
So...
Oops.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, are we reconsidering the way it was originally written or the way it's written now?
Right now, we are reconsidering the motion as it was originally written two weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Nay.
Ferguson?
Nay.
Cole?
Nay.
Parliament?
Aye.
Fail.
Help me with the numbers there, Christina.
Uh, four to two.
Motion fails four to two? Okay, thank you.
And now, is it appropriate to ask for a motion to approve the new resolution? Is that the way I understand it?
To, yeah, to make modifications.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 5660, which is modifications to the original mask, Resolution 3230?
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution 3720?
What is the proper number?
It...
Thirty-seven thirty?
Yeah.
Thirty-seven thirty?
Agenda is wrong. Yeah, thirty-seven thirty.
Okay, I'll amend my motion though.
Motion to approve Resolution 3730 as presented. Motion is second. Any questions, comments?
I want to state the last time that we saw this, there was a word in there of shall change into should. The other change was, this is, in the old one, it had the word mandatory masking.
Mrs. Barb, if you are talking, I have lost you.
Okay, well, I'll talk louder. Can you hear me now? Barb? Can we get her reconnected?
Yep.
Please enter your password, followed by the pound key. You are now a leader. Please record your name after the pound. Press pound when you are finished.
City Council.
Thank you.
Hello? Barb, you there?
Yes.
All right. All right, we're back.
Okay, as I was stating, there were a couple of changes where it says now therefore it be resolved by the city of Brandon at the following mandatory. The mandatory part was removed. The following face mask, mask covering measures be strongly recommended and encouraged to slow the community spread of COVID-19. And then in section two, the change was every person within the city of Brandon should wear, not shall wear, but should wear a mask covering over the mouth and the nose. And to be clear, this is a resolution in support of the CDC recommendations that came out in regards to masking. And I will also note that the CDC recommendations, masking is number three on those. And we have hand washing, we have close contact, avoiding, then you have masks, you have cover your coughs and sneezes, and clean and disinfect. Masking is obviously the one thing that is probably the most visible of those recommendations. And maybe if we encourage it and people start wearing masks, they will follow through with other things. The mask, I have to agree, doesn't do a whole lot of good unless you follow some of the other things. And as has been said, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that you won't get it, but that coupled with other things can help. It's not a mandate. There is still choices that can be made, and all we're doing here is making a statement of support. We're not mandating, we're not gonna, there is no enforcement on this. We're not going to pass an ordinance that says you will wear it, and if you don't, you're going to get a citation. A lot of communities have passed those ordinances, and then they have absolutely no enforcement component to that, which, you know, for me, being in law enforcement as many years as I was, that just doesn't, that doesn't fly. That doesn't make a lot of sense. I think people are getting better about wearing masks here recently because of the spike that we had as, one gentleman did point out, the spike is now settling. Hopefully, it stays down that path. We're coming up on Christmas. A lot of predictions that Christmas and Christmas gatherings are going to up this once again. Again, all this is, is a statement of support for the CDC recommendations, and it is our, this just states that this is also our recommendation, that people wear masks. And coupled with that, I would also encourage them to do all the other things that they can do, especially, I think, probably keeping that distance, that six to eight foot distance that they can. And that's all I've got to say about that.
Thank you. Other comments?
I would echo what Dave said. This is certainly not a mandate. We are only passing a resolution that, or denying a resolution that encourages what the CDC has already presented to us eight or nine months ago. We certainly, whatever the decision is made, some media outlet will write a story that says we either denied or passed mask mandates, which is their problem, not ours. We certainly are not writing a resolution for hand washing. We don't have people getting resolutions for social distancing or not touching your face. For some reason, this one has become a hot button. So, there we go.
Jack?
Thank you. My whole feeling on this whole thing is widely known. I believe in mask mandates. I believe in whatever measures that we can do to help slow the spread. And there's, you can research different things and get different opinions across the board. But I like one quote I heard from the Surgeon General yesterday. He said, "It's okay to have questions, but it's not okay to make decisions based on misinformation." And he's a health professional. I truly believe we need to support and be behind our health professionals that are saying that we, as health professionals, we need help. Please, you know, implement whatever measures, including masking, that you can do. So I definitely support the healthcare and the science professionals, saying that these things do work. And our number one concern does need to be the public health, and so that's why I'm fully behind this. I do know that cases are going down, and that's a great thing. Vaccines are around the corner. But I have one question to the fact that cases are going down, especially East River. Where are the mask mandates in South Dakota? East River. So, is that helping? I'd like to say it is. So, with that, with that all said, I am obviously in support of the new measure, a new Resolution 3730.
Other comments?
So David made a comment that he sees a lot more people wearing masks, and I 100% agree with that. I've been trying really hard to pay attention to what is happening in our community, and it has progressively gone from, not even throughout percentages, but it's very high now, very high. I mean, there is a lot of peer pressure around wearing masks, and I think most people want to do the right thing, even the people who have already had COVID are wearing masks, just because they feel it's the right thing to do. My problem with this is, you know, we collected data, the chamber collected data and gave us that information of what our local community is doing. And we have so many businesses that have already stepped up and are doing more than just the basics or the bare minimum or CDC requirements. My fear is something like this just creates even more division than there already is. You know, Jack, you had made a comment, we should do what we can that will help. We don't know if it'll help. I mean, I will wear a mask with the chance that it will help, and I hope it will help. But we don't know. Who are we trying to affect by this? I mean, if we have a huge percentage of people following the so-called rules and the peer pressure and masking up, that leaves a small percentage that aren't wearing these masks. Is that who we're trying to get to? Because it's not going to work. The people that refuse to wear a mask aren't going to be changed by this resolution. So we already have so much divide. I just, I just can't support something that creates even more divide. Had we been in front of this a few months ago, I would have been in a different place. But on the heels of what I see our community is doing, what I hear our community is doing, and the numbers going down, and the vaccine starting to circulate, I just, I can't support this. But if I'm the odd Doug out, that's fine.
Other comments? Hearing none. Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Nay.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Nay.
Ferguson?
Nay.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Three, three.
Three to three. I anticipated of a vote like this, and so I do have some prepared comments that I'll go through, if you'll bear with me. As you can see by the split of this council, this is a very complex topic, both here in Brandon and throughout the country. It's been disheartening to me to see how this issue has morphed into the political hotbed that it has. I personally am very much in favor of a masking policy, as my family and I believe it is what is best to keep those around us and ourselves safe. I have, and I will continue to wear a mask until COVID-19 is under control. My concern right now is about the policy being proposed. A resolution as presented without enforcement is merely a suggestion. We've heard that comment made before. After listening to the community, I believe that those people that will wear masks today will continue to wear masks tomorrow, and those that don't will not wear a mask with or without this proposed resolution. That's my read on the community. That is very disheartening to me, but it is reality. If this body of government passes the masking resolution as presented, I think it'll incite a divide in our community that we've not seen for some time. It is clear this is a divisive topic. This city council of six people cannot... This city council of six people cannot agree on it. We've been through this twice. We had several votes on this, and we are back to three to three today. So it's very clear that it's a very divisive topic. With that being said, the attitudes of the people at Brandon are abundantly clear to me. There have been many posts on social media of paying it forward, paying it forward line at scooters, and I believe that mask wearing is parallel to that act. If we can all show that kind of care for one another, COVID-19 will be no match for our community. Wearing a mask is as much about the people around you, your friends, family, neighbors, teachers, grocery store workers, and the community as it is for yourselves. We have to work together and care for one another. Compassion comes in many forms, and COVID-19 should not destroy the values Brandon holds dear. This has been a long battle, one which is not over, and it's my job to represent and care for the city of Brandon through it all. However, this proposal is not one that I believe will facilitate a drastic change in our current practices. And I do not believe in approving something with only political... I do not believe in proving something with only political motivation to make a good appearance. People that know Paul Lundberg know that. I will be voting no on this resolution, but I hope and pray that our community can take to heart what it really means to wear a mask. Be respectful of each other's beliefs and opinions, and do your part to help keep this community safe. I, as mayor, and we as a city, will continue with our citywide masking campaign that we are currently on. I will make sure that that happens, and I will continue that. With that being said... will continue that. That being said, the motion fails with my no vote.
Can you hear it, Mark?
Yes.
I don't know why it's going, uh, red. Sorry, here.
Item D two is a wage study for 2021 pay plan.
Yes. I have a big sheet for you. I'm just really here to talk about the first page.
Wow, that's a nice size. Good evening. Um, we should be looking right now at the, the first document, which is the updated wage analysis, um, spreadsheet. This, the format is, um, identical to what we presented, actually, I think the last time, the first time was three years ago. Um, just to look, talk about, a little bit about the format, the, the columns directly to the right of the, of the job titles, but to the left of the green, yellow, red, those are sources that actually are, they're, they're national and local and regional sources that are, are actually reporting the, the wage data in the, in the same style. So, they present them in percentiles. And we have been typically looking at the twenty-fifth, fiftieth, and seventy, seventy-fifth percentile for each, each of the sources. There's no change in, in the sources or, but there's just change in the data. We just went in and, and made sure that we've got the most up-to-date. Um, most of those sources are, are up-to-date as of mid-2019, which is very typical. Usually they, they update them on an annual basis. Um, the SHRM, the Southeast SHRM, um, survey, which is the second source, they always, they do their, is their, every other year, but they lasted it on, in the, in, uh, May of, or June of 2019. And then you have the other sources there. So, what that, the first section of this is those official salary survey sources. Some of them are online, some of them are membership-related, um, is that information. What is a little different is to the right of there, um, we have some, some less official sources, but definitely very credible and interesting data to have. Um, so we've included a 2020 multi-city internal, uh, survey that was done via email with a list of communities in southeast South, South Dakota, some in Iowa, some in Minnesota, that are of like size, uh, and makeup to Brandon. Um, we just updated the survey that was done previously. I will tell you, and I think COVID had a lot to do with it, we didn't get as much response because so many people were working offsite or working on other things. So, um, it's just interesting to note that. The 2017 is a municipal survey that Brian Reed shared with me, and that's just the last time that one was done. So, you have to, I don't want to say, take it with a grain of salt, but realize that you have data that's coming from different sources and it has different timing and so forth. The 2020 South Dakota Police Management Survey was provided to me, shared, shared with me, um, by Chief, Chief Weir. Um, and it was very comprehensive, but pretty much just limited to PD. And then we were able to get, um, a full report of the Sioux Falls City minimum wages for all the positions, and those were included. And then the far, far right column is the Brandon Current Base. So, that doesn't mean that's a current average wage or incumbents in that position. That is what our starting wage would be, um, if we had an opening in, in those particular, um, positions. So, it's important as you look at this, um, document, I, I've used this analogy before, but this is not necessarily apples to apples. This is kind of a little bit of a fruit basket here. So, you want to really be cautious. I didn't, I didn't average those municipality and those separate surveys, because some of them are current wages averages, some of them are minimums, some are, um, and they're all self-reported. So, I'm always cautious to look at that and, and try to average that together, because you're really looking at different, different information. So, it's, it's valuable, um, it's, it's, it's interesting to look at it, but you, we want to be really cautious as we're using it to make decisions with, whether we increase wages or place someone, some jobs in, in the pay plan. So, do you have any questions about the wage analysis? Like I said, some of you have seen it before a couple of times.
How are, how are people being, I, I think Barbara asked on Thursday to see, like, where people are currently slotted, and then compare it to how this new pay plan would be affected. Um, and I guess just looking at line items, I'm just curious how they, because like, um, I'm just working from the bottom up, like, option one, on the bottom, it says city administrator fifty-five, seventy-four. But then on, on the current, it shows, uh, forty-nine, thirty-one. Tell me, how are these numbers, where are you coming up with these?
Well, this, this particular, this is, these two documents are, I don't want to say they're not related, but it's very difficult to, to integrate them, because the wage analysis is simply looking at, per our sources, what's the going rate, what are other places paying, and that sort of thing. What, the only thing that kind of integrates it to what we're currently doing is that far right column where it says Brandon Current Base. That's using that ten-page, ninety-step, our current pay plan, which, if you've seen it, it's really large.
And that's, that's the number I'm referring to?
Right.
Is the Brandon Current Base?
So, the Brandon Current Base is where it's falling in that, that current lengthy, uh, complex pay plan, pay plan. Um, which, what, what that, the, the difference between that plan and the ones that we're proposing here is that basically the jobs themselves, other than the minimum, there's, there's no, there's no middle or end to anything, and there's no, there's no finite, um, situation. And that's what we're proposing with these pay plans, is to have, this is, this is the range for this job. We don't have ranges in our current plan. We just have, we have steps, and then we, we have, yeah, steps, and then, how does it go?
Lines, lines.
Line, lines, and then steps. And if you get to the end of that line, and that step, you go to the bottom of the next. So, it's just like, it, it's, it's hard to navigate it, it's hard to explain it. And it's, and it makes it really difficult when you look at a, at a wage analysis, to put it in a plan that, that doesn't have those parameters in it. Um, so, what we're proposing, and I'll let, um, I, I did actually set up this orig- these original options, and these are similar to other ones we've looked at. But together, Christina and I have kind of, um, created some different options to be considered here, um, which would incorporate basically with, with, be able to incorporate where the, the employees are in their jobs and in the current pay plan, and actually superimpose it, and so to speak, onto this, the new projected plan. And I guess I'd, I'd rather have Christina present that, because she can talk what that has to do, what, what effect that has on budget, and a lot of other things. I'm here to answer questions about a pay plan in general, but I think the important part, once we get into that part, is really talking with you about budgets, and where, where do things fall, and what, what would that cost or not cost, and what kind of decisions we'd need to make.
I have a question, Julie.
Mm-hmm.
It's nice that you have Sioux Falls in here, but realistically, I think we're more, probably be more comparable to, do we know what, like Hartford, T, Harrisburg, what their city employees, like what, and, you know?
In any of the local communities that, that we reached out to, first of all, their, their information would be included in these other surveys, because, um, I, I wouldn't be able to identify them. And that's also why I like those, those first five sources, is all of, all of our wages are included in, for instance, the Department of Labor. That one's the one is the, that is the most, um, credible, as far as I'm concerned, because that's, that's conducted by the state. So, they're in there. I just can't say where they are and what they are specifically. But I can tell you if they, if, if it's a community that you're referring to that happened to respond to our multi-city internal survey, or that participated in the municipal survey in 2017, they might be included in there as well. But, um, we, we really rely on their data to be in those, especially that Department of Labor statistics, which is a very trustable, trustworthy source. Okay? Any other questions about the wage analysis?
Has it ever been considered, Julie, to, to look at these, like, individually, like, like, just take the Public Works folks and, and look at them, I mean, from a bigger perspective than just slotting in some, some comparisons to other communities, like, like to Vicki's point, where some Sioux Falls being compared, sometimes it should be compared, because there are some very similar jobs and, and the parameters of the description, and they could still live here and work there.
Right.
There are some jobs that that should definitely be a factor. And then there's others that, that, uh, you know, I'll use one that we don't have, so I don't offend anybody. You know, our Economic Development Director position might look very different than Sioux Falls' economic development-
Right.
Director.
Right.
So, I, I think the geographical stuff is very important. I don't know that just a one-size-fits-all, like, let's compare Sioux Falls to all departments.
Well, and that's why we actually, we try to look at all these different sources, because potentially everyone here, their definition of what our market is and what our competition is might differ. And, and someone might say, "Well, but we're only, you know, our population is less than ten thousand, so we can't compare to the, the market in Sioux Falls." But if someone says, and, and it's a good, both of them are good cases, but they're usually on polar opposites, when we, when we post a job, we, we're not just drawing people from, from like-sized communities. Our market and our competition comes from a much closer resource, which is Sioux Falls. So, that's why it's important that we have it there. But that's why it's also important that we not just lump it into some average, um, because it, it, we really have to look at all the points of it. And that's what makes it more complex and more difficult to do. Um, and I think it was the first time I did, did this particular analysis, because we'd only looked at municipalities, we'd only looked at like-sized communities, and there was a desire to go beyond just the public sector and looking at those parameters, and look at, at the private sector as well. So, that was the first time that we actually pulled in some of this other information. And, and that's, that's always a good exercise to do, because when we post an ad, we're going to get people from, from municipalities that are larger than ours, or smaller. Um, and we could potentially have someone hired away from us, um, for those same reasons, so.
Julie, do you know, have we ever done, like, a market analysis? Like, not saying every year, but I know some cities, like, every ten years, like, do an independent market analysis, a company coming in. So, we really do know whether it's, um, if our jobs are truly getting paid what they-
I don't think we've hired anybody else other than us as, as the consultants. That's, we've done it. I have actually done this for other, other communities. I've worked for projects in Garrettson, Parkston, Canton. So, um, kind of been hired to do that. Um, but I, I don't know that they've ever gone to the extent where they've hired a, you know, a, a large firm to come in and do that. Honestly, unless, unless they have some other pathway, they're going to look at some of the same information that we are. And they're going to charge a lot more for it, probably.
So, I spent a lot of time, I guess, on the, the late, um, pay plan structures the last couple of weeks to really just kind of get a pay plan and a new one in front of you. Our current one is ninety lines long and twenty-one steps wide. I think it was desired to have a pay plan by the end of the year. Um, that's what this is in front of you for. Um, I will do, note that I do need to have a salary resolution drafted into you, and it needs to be approved the first meeting in January. So, if we can come to an agreement on a new pay plan, um, structure tonight, that would be desired. So, then I can use that for my salary resolution. I do believe that this, um, fits and it works. Um, moving forward, I think it's a good plan. Um, it's obviously a lot shorter and smaller, so it, um, that helps as well. Um, option one, you know, I kind of did last week, and then I talked to Julie, and Chief Weir today. And option two really, really just moves the officers, um, around a little bit. I know that's been a topic of discussion, and, um, so if you want to move forward with that. I will say, like, the city administrator was brought up. All I'm doing is taking and sliding them in, in, into a line, so they aren't going backwards, but they would, they would go into the next step up. So, it's not, I don't, I guess don't get stuck on the, some grade one on his line. He would get slotted in to an appropriate line, or appropriate grade there. Um, option one, I did kind of run some numbers on what kind of the difference would be on everybody. Overall, you're looking at about a forty thousand dollar, um, difference between our current pay structure and the new option one. If you were to move forward with option two, um, you're looking about ninety thousand dollar difference.
What was up? Do you want to hit?
The price would be about forty thousand. I do think option two is, is a good, um, a good happy medium to get started with the police officers. The current base does move up two dollars and twenty-two cents for a police officer. I think it's a good starting point. I think some tweaks can be made, but I think some of those discussions can be made at budget time, so we can get that, those budget numbers into the 2022 budget, um, so we can account for those additional increases, if that's what you desire. But I do think option two, if you want to go that route, is a happy medium point, at this point, to at least get a new pay plan structure started. Um, and there'll be some tweaks. One thing that we will have to talk about, and we can talk about beginning of next year, is what happens when they reach their max? What happens at step sixteen? You know, are we going to do longevity pay? Are we going to do, um, different things like that, which we can talk about in early next year as well, but, um...
They would get their COLA no matter what, right? Their COLA every year? They would still get that, even if they hit their max, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
So, quick, quick question on, uh, just to try to put it a little bit in perspective. On option two, uh, for police officers, uh, I see the grade max at sixteen is, uh, thirty-one, ninety-seven. What is the, the top of the scale under the current plan for where, and I think officers are on line, what, twenty-seven of the old plan?
Yep, I can go in a minute.
And what is the top of the scale under the old plan for, uh, for police officers?
Twenty-seven is twenty-eight, eighty-eight?
Pardon?
Twenty-eight, eighty-eight?
Twenty-eight, eighty-eight, okay. And, uh, for police sergeants?
Um, sergeants are forty-seven, thirty-eight, ninety-two.
City administrator?
Oh, he's on, he's- How do you know who's on what line?
You see the positions listed to the left?
I have, uh-
Oh, she, oh, she has the old one in front of her.
I have the old-
Right.
I have it in my head, except for that one. I want to double-check on that one. I think he's on eighty, line eighty-six, which would be sixty-nine, fifty. Let me double-check though.
And just for clarification, and to be clear, uh, the city administrator right now is, is, uh, not making forty-nine, thirty-one. That's just the-
Yeah, correct.
That's the base.
That's the base.
If we need to hire tomorrow, that's where they start.
Right. If, unless we, unless we approve this.
It's possible that, you know, you can start them on, you don't have to start them on line one. You can start them, and, uh, that's, especially for the appointed people, that's a negotiated thing.
He's currently ma- the current line he's on is eighty-six, which maxes out at sixty-nine, fifty.
Sixty-nine, fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was mentioned that Chief Weir had some input in this, is that right? Uh, he did in the, the wage analysis. I don't know, if, you had a discussion with him today, if you talked to him about any of this. But he, he provided the, the, specifically the South Dakota, um, Police Management Survey, which is included in the wage analysis.
So, no input on where they're starting, or?
He has some. He certainly can come up and-
I didn't, I didn't know if department heads were participating in.
Well, we were going to meet with all of them today. However, Brian was out- Well, we were going to meet with all of them today, however, Brian was out today due to some things. I did meet with Chief Weir, um, because I know it was a hot topic, so I didn't meet with him.
Okay, would it be possible that 65? Okay, would it be possible that you meet with all the department, I mean, department heads? I just don't, just looking at this, and I don't care how much each person increases or how it is, but...
Nothing major changes.
I just don't want somebody to go up 10% in, in a, a department, and then somebody else goes up three, and then the department heads have to deal with that.
She did some...
On, on option one, it goes anywhere from 0 to 93 cents.
But that's something, like, if we just give you direction on what to go with the next time, it was when we actually vote on it, and you would be able, is that right? You'd have the resolution, is that what you're saying?
The first meeting.
Are we voting on anything now, or are we just telling you what direction we want you to go with to get?
I guess if you give me direction to go with option two, that's what I would be looking for right now, or one, or whatever you guys want for the new pay plan, so then I can create the salary resolution.
And then we would vote on that the first meeting in January?
Right, the salary resolution would be voted next time, but if you can approve of the new pay plan, then that's what I'd be looking for.
So Christina, this is Barb.
Yeah.
So if, if option one is an extra 40 and option two is an extra 90, our budget is already in place, so when would this take up that?
The pay plan, new pay plan?
Right, I mean, if it's going to be that much extra cost, we've already got our budget set for next year, how do we deal with that?
It'll be a budget supplement.
I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, go with option two. Is there a second?
Second, we can push it up, right? Or second?
Yes, yes.
On the second.
Motion is second to proceed with option two of the proposed, uh, pay plan. Options, uh, further discussion.
Well, this is Barb again, so I know that there is a lot of stuff that has to get done, but to have this come to the last meeting of the year and then be pushed through, I'm, I'm not thrilled with that, so I'm just going to express my displeasure with that, but we've got to do something, and I understand that.
I think, I, you know, the biggest thing we talked about, well, probably at budget time, is the police officer wages. And this wage study's been going on for years, and I'm trying, I'm trying to just propose a pay structure to you to get something, I guess, moving or done, because it's been, it's been just talked about and discussed, and, and nothing's moving forward. So I'm just trying to propose something to you so we can move forward, and option two would get, I believe, I, the police officers up where you guys were talking about, but it also does, um, it kind of moves everybody, so we're not specifically just looking at officers, but it just gets everybody on this new pay plan, so we can move forward with the new pay structure.
Can we wait then, since it's, I don't know about this budget supplement, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't know finances, but can we wait until July to implement it then? Like, the increase, I mean, so we don't have to do a, I don't know what that is. I don't know what that does to our budget, I'm not a numbers girl. So, that's what I'm just saying, so if we do it to July, when you, we start a new budget, right?
We don't start a budget in July, we start a budget in January.
But we start planning for the new one?
Start planning for 2022.
Okay, okay.
Now, this is something that's been talked about for, for years. You know, we're not talking about something that just started this past year. This is something that's been talked about for years. I, I dealt with that, that pay scale for a number of years. When I first came in, I had police officers that were scattered all over that sheet. We finally got it, uh, settled down so that all the police officers doing the same work, were at least on the same line and, and covered for the years. Uh, this is a much more compact, uh, much more understandable, uh, pay plan, and I don't see any reason why we need to talk about, this, this can has been kicked down the road and kicked down the road and kicked down the road, and, and we, you know, I'm, I'm frustrated by it. I think, uh, I think staff is frustrated by it, and, you know, we're not setting exactly where everybody's going to land on this right now, but we're just talking about option one, option two. Uh, as, as far as the cost difference, yeah, it would probably take a supplemental. We do supplementals all the time, and I'm not so sure, we didn't even talk about that earlier this year, of if we do the pace, uh, thing and it comes in above here, we can, we can do a supplemental. And so that, that was discussed.
I, I will add that when I do the budget for the salary averages, I do put a, you know, a small amount for raises in there, but then there is a percentage in there for overtime. So it could be possible that it's absorbed in the departments, it just depends on where everybody ends for the year and how much overtime there is. The only one that if you go option two, the only one that wouldn't be, would be the officers, and that would have to be a budget supplement.
The 90,000 in option two, how much of that is for our police force?
Almost half, about 42,000, while plus, yeah, it's about half.
So then, is there a way to give us a, a better description of where the other half is going?
Um, office staff is about 5,000, inspections is about 42, 4300. Police, I'm trying to add the difference, was fight and retirement. Police is actually 50, 54, 55,000. Parks would be about 4,000. Public Works would be about, uh, a little over 8,000, and then the largest, I won't say the lar, not the largest one, but law enforcement would be about 10,000, just because we're doing some changes there.
If I can review the math with counsel, if you just do the simple math, option two is plus $90,000, you said?
Yep.
There is 37 employees in the city of Brandon. $90,000 divided by 37 employees is a difference of $2,400 per employee. I submit to you, not a small difference. If you take that further and you figure out half of the additional 90,000 is with the police force, that would be 45,000. I believe there's 13 police officers. 45,000 divided by 13 is $3,500 per employee difference. Not a small difference. Just want to make you aware of what you're doing here. I'm not positive you're all on board with that.
I guess my question is for, as a, as a former department head, um, you have chosen this option two. What separates it from option one, and, um, why do we need to change it all? As somebody who used to actually deal with these papers.
I believe it's, uh, I'll, I'll speak to it, and then I'd probably invite Joe to come up and speak. The, uh, the pool for recruiting police officers is getting shallower, um, because of the recent, well, a few years of, of, of a, uh, I guess, an attack on the profession nationally, uh, the number of people that are coming into, uh, the business or that are interested in the business is dwindling. And what you end up with then is the, the quality of the applicants that, that you get in. You've got good applicants in there, just not as many to choose from. And, uh, we have, in this, in this area, we have fallen, uh, we're behind the sheriff's office, we're behind the, uh, the Sioux Falls PD, we're behind probably, I guess, the Lincoln County, and it's, the main thing I'm looking at is, is the base wage, and I think it would enhance it. Chief, would you like to add anything?
Sure. Thanks. So Dave talked about the, the pool being shallower, and I don't think the pool's, we had 45 applicants in 2019, we had 39 this last time, I think I misspoke last council meeting at 45, that was actually from 2019. So, I mean, the, the, the number of candidates is relatively the same, but even through that process, 39 candidates, we only ended up with one, what I would consider a viable candidate in the end. We couldn't maintain an eligibility list. And that goes towards the quality of candidates that you're getting. Unfortunately, a lot of the good candidates that normally would apply for law enforcement are not interested in the profession at this time because of some of the scrutiny, criticism, and second-guessing that goes on in the world today. And so I think that's a concern. I also think that every time you hire an officer, I spoke to the council about this before, you roll the dice. There's a liability risk when you have somebody that's carrying a gun, has arrest powers, can exercise deadly force, that's a lot of risk. And every time you hire somebody, you roll the dice. And, yeah, I've been, I've been in law enforcement for 38 years, but it's still a roll of dice for me. You go through a process, and you still have chance for error. I can tell you we have a very good police force right now. Any steps we can do to retain them would be positive. Yankton on January 1st is raising their beginning salary to 2325. Uh, Sioux Falls, uh, their beginning police officer on January 1st goes to 2612. Right now, the, the separation between us and Sioux Falls, after Sioux Falls gets the extra 4% on January 1st, and they get another 4% in January of 2022, the current difference is projected to be $12,758. I believe with option two, we reduce that gap to 78, 70, and 72 cents. Uh, it's not perfect, but it bridges some of that gap, fills in some of that void, and it's unrealistic for me to come to the council and say, hey, I want you to make up the $12,000 and be, uh, $12,758 to be equal to Sioux Falls. I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I do want to be somewhat competitive and at least bridge some of that gap. When I talk to you, and I think about August, we talked about meeting halfway, and, uh, this is less than that. But to me, uh, it's a good start, and, uh, it will make our police wages more competitive. We have a better chance of retaining our existing, uh, good officers, and if we lose anybody, we have a better chance of recruiting the candidates that we want. I think Brandon's a special place, I don't think we should settle for a lower candidate pool. And so, uh, I'm not trying to have a pipe dream, I'm trying to be realistic, and so I thought this was a good way to kind of meet, uh, kind of a third of the way down the road. And, uh, I, I strongly support, uh, option two. And just looking at my police department, I didn't look at the other departments, but looking at the police department, option two gives us a better chance to be competitive and limit the number of times we're rolling the dice.
Another thing with the new pay plan, whether you go with option one or two, um, it does allow for park maintenance to have different levels, park maintenance one, two, and three, public works as well, uh, public works one, two, three, and four. We currently do not have that. Um, that allows for disincentives. Um, we have those levels pretty much planned out, but, um, in public works, the more certifications you get, you move up, so, um, it, it just allows for that as well.
So I'm super in favor of the police side of this, but I really struggle with saying every other employee has to get $3,000 for the police to be able to be paid appropriately. Um, so you're saying there's zero other options? We can't, I mean, to me, there's been such a strong case made for the police. We've talked about it numerous times, we've seen lots of data, we've known it's a deficit, we have risks coming at us, we have, um, issues with, with keeping, um, candidates in our back pocket, eligibility list, forgot the word there. I mean, that's a known issue right now. I'm all for looking at these other departments if they want to bring a case forward and say this is why we should be at different levels. So just to pay everybody across the board thousands more, we're not doing our due diligence with how we're spending.
I want to, want to add, there's not great differences between any other department and option two, other than the police department. There's not great differences. It's all about the new pay plan and trying to fit them on that new pay plan. I can't, I have the old pay plan and I have the 2021 scale, and I can't have, go backwards on what we plan on paying, paying them in 1, 1 of 21, so it's slotting them on this new pay plan to get them in the appropriate spot without going backwards on their pay. That's all it is. So there's some that are going up 36 cents, there's some that are going up 58 cents. I think the max I said was 93 cents. If, uh, you go with option two, your officers are going up anywhere from $1.84 to $1.94, $1.74. So there is a big difference on everybody else and the officers.
And, and to be clear, you're talking about the, the first-year officers. The other officers, uh, you, you, you take the, the officer that's, that's got 14 years on, does that officer automatically end up in, uh, in 14, or is it a, okay, just, yeah, so it's...
It's, it's sliding them into the appropriate spot on...
So the major impact is on the, uh, the first-year officers? Is that, would that be fair?
Well, I'm making it, I'm putting the current officers on the appropriate line to get them that, how do you word, I don't know how you word it, um...
Separation?
Well, to get kind of the raise that the base is, I'm trying to, I'm putting the officers on the appropriate line to get that similar raise, I guess is how I would word it.
Yeah, I can understand.
You know, Christine, you, you mentioned, you know, some of these are small raises, but take somebody making 20 bucks an hour and you give them a 50 cent raise, that's two and a half percent, if I'm not mistaken. That's typically what COLA is. So, I don't, I, I need a little help to give everybody a average or something like that.
I'm just trying to get something from Freddie that we've been talking about for years, so I don't really care which way you go.
So can we, I know it's time-sensitive, but can we table it? I mean, it's really tough to be seeing this document for 10 minutes and then making a decision on it.
There's a motion in front of you.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, so, no, we just can't table it, just answered. Any other questions, comments? I, I'm very well aware that I can call the question there.
I just want to clarify what we're voting on is just for you to draft a resolution that we still vote on whether we want it to go through or not.
The motion in front of you is the, to approve option two as our new pay plan.
Oh, okay, so whether you have the resolution, okay.
Well, what, and what, sorry, this is Barb again, what, what's our alternative if we say no, then what?
Then I use our current pay, I use our current pay structure, which is on page 62 to 63, and that's what I'll continue to use.
Or if this fails, we can also look at option number one as an alternative, correct?
Could we also make an option three?
Hmm? Call the roll, Christina.
Clark?
Nate.
David?
Nate.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
3-3? Did I get that right?
Number one, I don't see any humor in this, in the fact that we continue to have a split council. I see no humor in it whatsoever. Uh, with that being said, uh... I will vote no and, and fail this resolution. Now, what Christina said about this resolution for the salaries, it is just that. It's not the Bible by any means. It's a resolution that she comes forward that we are required by law to do, to publish everybody's salaries. It is not the Bible, as I said. It can change. It is not the Bible, as I said. It can change. So I would ask that we try to get this council on board with a majority vote with something that we can move forward with. We rely on the administration to try to come up with something that we can...I get it, but we got to get something that appeases more than three people of this city council, Christina.
I propose looking at this with the changes to the police department as a start, and then we can look at the rest on a department-by-department basis. That would be my proposal. But I think to just cross the board, I just don't think that's right.
Item D three is the approval of the two thousand and twenty audit engagement letter with Quam and Berglin for the two thousand and twenty audit. At twenty-seven thousand two hundred, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion is second to approve Quam and Berglin to perform the two thousand and twenty audit at a cost of twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. Any questions? Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have an additional company on our two thousand and twenty-one garbage hauler license request, Novak Sanitary. I entertain a motion to approve them. Motion is second to approve Novak Sanitary as an additional garbage hauler for two thousand and twenty-one. Any questions? Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two additional sewer cleaning companies wanting to be on our approved list for two thousand and twenty-one, Hander Plumbing and Heating and Mr. Ruder. I entertain a motion to approve those two companies. Motion is second to approve Hander Plumbing and Heating and Mr. Ruder as two additional companies on the two thousand and twenty-one sewer cleaning list. Any questions?
One quick one there. Riley, you bit mixed on some concerns earlier about one of the companies. Do you see any problems with moving forward with the approval of these two?
No, the only concern was Mr. Ruder hadn't applied for an application, and they had done some work in Brandon, and they knew in the past that they had to have a license in town here. Excuse me. And anyways, from what I understand, their master plumber changed, so that's why they didn't renew the license right away. So they both...most of the companies that are on that list, there's a few of them that don't usually do too much in town, so I'm okay with the list. They've been on the list before.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six is an agreement with CCOG for MPO planning funds. I believe that's to apply for the grant to pay for a portion of your salary, Tammy. I entertain a motion to approve the agreement with CCOG for the expenditure of MPO planning funds.
I'll move to approve.
Motion is second to approve as presented. Any questions?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Streets, we have an agreement in front of you with Alliance Communications titled a sidewalk agreement. As I understand it, there's going to be construction going around their new office building, so we're developing an agreement to not require them to put a sidewalk in where it's going to be torn up anyhow in the next year. If I can entertain a motion to approve that agreement?
Move to approve.
Motion is second to approve the sidewalk agreement with Alliance Communications as presented. Any questions?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item E three, we have pay app number nine from Sukup Construction for the core area Phase One project in the amount of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine...five hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll move.
Motion is second to approve pay app number nine to Sukup Construction. Any questions? Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F under Water and Sewer, we have a number of resolutions setting rates for the two thousand and twenty-one year. First one is Resolution thirty-three dash twenty, setting the streetlight fees. Proposed in that resolution is an increase of one dollar a month for the streetlights. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Motion is second to approve Resolution thirty-three twenty as presented with an increase of a dollar per month in the streetlight assessment fees. Questions, comments?
How long is that in F five?
Two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F two is a Resolution thirty-four dash twenty, the setting of the water rates. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Christina. It appears to be a zero percent increase in the base and a varying increase in the volumetric charges, anywhere from five to ten percent, depending on the volume. I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I approve.
Motion is second to approve Resolution thirty-four dash twenty, setting the two thousand and twenty-one water rates. Questions, comments? Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F three is a Resolution thirty-five dash twenty, setting the sewer rates for two thousand and twenty-one. Looks like a five percent increase across the board. Correct?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion is second to approve Resolution thirty-five dash twenty as presented for sewer rates for two thousand and twenty-one. Any questions, comments? Christina.
Well, I do think that we need to make a comment that we had anticipated a fifteen percent increase, and we are at a five percent increase. And I just think that that is from a good planning and being resourceful, and I think it's a credit to our staff and our planning team, so I want to thank them for their efforts on that behalf.
So noted. Other questions, comments? Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F four, Resolution thirty-six dash twenty, is setting of the CDC, SDC charges of approximately twenty-four hundred dollars each. The main point there, the city share, looks like it's being reduced from four hundred and seventy-seven dollars each to two hundred and thirty-nine dollars each. Correct?
Yes.
I entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Motion is second to approve Resolution thirty-six dash twenty as presented for CDC, SDC charges. I'm sorry. Any questions, comments? CDC is in my mind. Wonder why? It's a joke, people. Laugh. I can't tell that you're smiling behind your mask, I guess. No other questions? Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Item number F five, we have the water treatment plant final option. We have a recommendation from staff to recommend alternative one as presented by AE two S with an alternative bid option of alternate three. I'd entertain a motion to approve the administration recommendation.
I'll approve.
Motion is second to approve the recommendation from administration for the water treatment plant final option of alternate one with AE two S. Just for clarification, alternate one is the, I'll call it, the IMAR sand option, just the basic bare-bones option, with an add alternate of alternate number three, which is RO, filtering of the water. That's an add alternate only at this point. Comments, questions from the board?
So if we move forward with a bid process, when can we anticipate we get it, and how long are they good for, the bid?
So let's back up just a second. This would just be us finishing our facility plan. We're working through that study right now, and we can't finish that without picking one of these alternatives, so we can do the environmental process on that. Once we have this, then what we'll do is we'll work with AE two S, and we'll come up with a proposal. And I'll make sure to break out that extra design work for the RO that would be on top of just expanding our water treatment plant. That way you can see how much we would spend on the design if we chose to either go with it or didn't go with it, depending on how we bid out. It's anticipated to take probably a year to go through the design process. Once we have a design, then the following year, that following spring, we would probably bid this out, that bid process. We have to advertise and whatnot, so that takes about thirty days. And then, once we get that bid back, we can't just sit on that. That's when we have to make a decision on if we're going to soften or not. Yeah, the bid is good for thirty days. If we can't make a decision, then we'll have to reject the bids and try again.
Counsel, understand?
So it would be coming back before council, before we say yes, spend the money on getting the RO designed in a bid?
Exactly. Yep. This would just be so we can finish the study.
So what we're doing right now is giving you permission and talk to AE two S to proceed, basically?
Right. Yep.
Okay. Any idea what the additional, that alternate RO design would cost?
It could be pretty extensive, about four to five hundred thousand.
Just for the design?
For the RO part.
In order for us to make the decision on whether or not we want to go with that?
Mm-hmm. Which is why, if we move forward with this, we can finish the study and work on the environmental process of it. And then, when we do the proposal, I'll break out those individual, like RO costs, so council can see that number.
Okay, so this vote doesn't commit us to another four or five...okay.
No. Nope. Promise.
So will that all be done before we discuss it with our capital improvements plan?
Not really.
Oh, boy. Just the proposal or the bid?
Yeah, you're going to give us basically two prices, and we're spending time trying to figure out in what way we want to spend the money. I would like to have the prices before I determine wherein the water treatment plant falls.
So Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, but the water treatment plant will come out of the water fund, and so whatever direction we go there will impact the rates. It's not going to be the general fund, so it doesn't go against some of those other projects.
It'll be a surcharge bond, and so therefore it doesn't go against debt capacity either. So I guess it doesn't really matter. You just need to prioritize the plan expansion is what you would need to prioritize, and we can talk about that at a capital improvement plan meeting, just to move that process forward. But it doesn't...as far as prioritizing, you know, we have to expand the plant, so I would say that's maybe one of your top priorities. And how we pay for it is, would be through a surcharge, and then that would be just the decision on how much you want to surcharge the residents at the time that the bids come in.
Any other questions?
So if we know we don't want to do RO right now, can we do a bid for the space for RO without having to have RO designed?
Ideally, we would design it because there's other things that go into it. It's not just the building. It's the piping, the pumps. AE two S is here if we wanted to ask him some of those questions.
I think you explained that to us last time, but, I mean, yes, it's a big decision. It's not just haphazardly saying, let's throw out RO and see where the dart lands. I think the kind of numbers that you just gave us there, it's a big decision whether we really want to go with that alternative, which, as I said previously, with the survey that we've done, I believe that our hands are tied pretty tightly. So I think we can approve to go ahead with this planning stage and get them to go forward with the process and the environmental studies or whatever we got to do before we get this going as recommended. I don't think we're binding ourselves to anything there. So I'll call the question. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F six is change order number six on the Main Avenue Interceptor Project with H&amp;W Contracting, adding twenty-two thousand nine hundred and five dollars to the total contract. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Motion is second to approve change order number six as presented. Any questions, comments from council?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F seven is a wage adjustment for Dustin Wagner to nineteen dollars and sixty-two cents an hour.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment for Dustin Wagner to nineteen dollars and sixty-two cents an hour as presented. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Item number ten, new business, the financial statements as of November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, were in your packet. Any questions or comments on those? Any other new business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn at eight oh seven P.M.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn at eight oh seven P.M. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.